Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us. This is a Commissioner meeting of March 9th, 2022 at 6:00 PM here at Sussex County Community College in the Performing Arts Center here in Newton, New Jersey. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Teri to please call the roll.
Commissioner Carney.
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Here.
Director Fasano.
Here.
Commissioner Patillo.
Here.
Commissioner Yardley.
Here.
And now I'd like to ask if you can please join with us in a moment of silence and a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231 PL 1975 has been made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on January 9th, 2022, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street in Newton, New Jersey, to the following: The New Jersey Herald, The Star-Ledger, WSUS Radio, and WNNJ Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for Public Announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, we'd like to remind you to please mute all electronic devices. Item five on our agenda is the approval of our agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Still move.
Commissioner Patillo moves. Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carries. Item six on our agenda is our proclamation certificates and presentations. We have two. The first one is celebrating Women's History Month, and I'll pass it along to Commissioner Fantasia.
Thank you. This is our proclamation celebrating Women's History Month. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home, and whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation, and whereas American women are particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation, and whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, and whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military, and whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing our own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which creates a more fair and just society for all, and whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and studies of American history. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners that March is designated as Women's History Month by order of the Board of County Commissioners, Anthony Fasano, Commissioner Director, Christopher Carney, Deputy Commissioner, and Commissioner Sylvia Patillo, Herbert Yardley, and Dawn Fantasia. So I would just like to say for a moment to specifically thank Commissioner Patillo. It has been my pleasure serving alongside of you. It was quite a feat. We made history together, Sussex County history, being the first duo as director and commissioner and, I'm sorry, deputy director of the then Board of Freeholders in 2020. We had no idea what was awaiting us because that was the year that COVID broke, and it was some year to be, it was quite an education to be in the driver's seat at that time, but I want to thank you for your leadership and your guidance through that time, and I was just very proud to serve with you. And I'd like to thank Elka and Mary, and Carol is here as well, and just the sea of faces of ladies in the audience who just make amazing contributions, you know, whether they were mothers, daughters, sisters, aunts, friends, volunteers, workers, we really, we are half the population, and, you know, we do one of the most amazing things ever, and that's we've birthed every single person in here. A woman had, man had something to do with it too, make no mistake, but, you know, we did the heavy lifting on the delivery, let's put it that way. So thank you to all the women, thank you to Teri, also for all of your help, and let's just celebrate, celebrate the good, because sometimes in this world, it doesn't seem like there's an awful lot to celebrate these days, but this is a happy thing to celebrate in the month of March, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fantasia. Would you like to?
Yes. Would Jeanette Barnes or Rachel Crowley be here this evening?
Just kind of say so.
Okay. Not hearing them, I'll just read the proclamation for the Girl Scouts. I remember celebrating their 100th anniversary, and now we're at 110. It's amazing how fast time goes. Res March 12th, 2022 marks the 110th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA, the largest and most impactful leadership program for girls in the world. And whereas since our beginnings, Girl Scouts has emphasized public service and civic engagement, and has fostered a sense of community in girls. And whereas Girl Scouts works to champion the ambitions, cultivate the talents, and develop the skills of girls to confidently pursue their passions and make the world a better place. And whereas during a time when girls are experiencing increased levels of anxiety, stress, loneliness, and depression, Girl Scouts support their mental health, and is an accepting, safe space where they feel free to be themselves, and where leaders and other girls are sources of support during difficult times. And whereas at a time when civics education is missing from many schools, Girl Scouts engages girls of all grade levels in civics programming that deepens their understanding of democracy and government, prepares them for a lifetime of civic engagement, and motivates them to take action on issues that are important to them. And whereas Girl Scouts offers girls 21st century programming in science, technology, engineering, and math, the outdoors, entrepreneurship, and beyond, helping girls develop invaluable life skills. And whereas Gold Award Girl Scouts take on projects that have a measurable and sustainable impact on a community. And whereas today, more than 50 million women are Girl Scout alums who have made the world a better place, and now therefore be it resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners do hereby applaud the Girl Scout Movement and Girl Scouts of Northern New Jersey for providing girls with a safe, inclusive, all-girls space where they can hone their skills and develop leadership abilities. And we declare the week of March 6th to be Girl Scout Week, concluding on March 12th, 2022, the 110th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA by order of the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner Director Anthony Fasano, Deputy Director Chris Carney, myself, Sylvia Patillo, Commissioner Herbert Yardley, and Commissioner Dawn Fantasia. I would like to comment on this because, as mayor, I used to work with Girl Scouts a lot, and by the time they got to gold, going through the silver and the bronze, and then they became gold, it was quite an achievement for the work that they had to accomplish to get that award. And there's one award that stayed in my mind because it really touched me, and I have to say that our Girl Scouts are not only self-confident and motivated, but they're compassionate people, very compassionate people. And the project was, she made a gift package for the cancer ward in the hospital, for the children's ward, the cancer children's ward. And when I, she gave me one of the packages, and when I took that package and I saw what was in it, there was a little stuffed animal, and there was a little treat, and there was a little note from her, it really hit me because my nephew had leukemia, and I know what it's like to walk into a cancer ward for children, and you're sitting there feeling like you're all alone. I can't tell you the warmth that came from that package, and I just, I couldn't praise her enough for being so compassionate to think of something like that, that really, when we talk about touching the community, touches the hearts of the community. So I want to thank everybody, all of the people that work with our Girl Scouts that give so much of their time to help these girls achieve their goals and become the great women that they do become, and take positions not just in our community, but in our government. And I want to tell you that this is most amazing group of young girls that I've ever met have come from this program. So thank you to all the parents and to all the people that are the leaders for these programs. They do a wonderful job.
Thank you, Commissioner Patillo and Commissioner Fantasia, for reading those two important proclamations this month. Item seven on our agenda is our public hearings, in which we have none. Item eight on our agenda is our first public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. When you arrive, state your name, your municipality, and the agenda topic for the record. Do we have a motion to open the floor for public comment?
Still move.
Commissioner Patillo moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries, and we are now open to the floor.
William Hayden, Frankfurt Township, and it's on the issue of paying the bills. Last week, another speaker brought up the fact that the bills are not listed. As we all agree, transparency in government is a good thing. I spoke with several former Freeholder Commissioners, and they all said in their tenure they had done it. Even on page 11 of your own handbook, it says that all bills will be reviewed for payment by the Board during the session during the business agenda of its regular meetings. So I'd like to know why we're not putting publicly what we're paying and letting the public know what the business of the county is. Thank you.
Do you want to take some? Sure. So, I mean, the bill list, to the best of my knowledge, Mr. Hayden, is available for anyone to inspect. I mean, the Commissioners get an entire packet, which isn't, you know, something that sits up here publicly available, but they are available to the members of the public. I don't know if you've taken the opportunity to either stop it at the admin building or inquire, but if you or any other member of the public wanted to see the bill list, it's not a secret.
That wasn't the question, and had previously been listed, why isn't it not now?
What do you mean, listed?
It had been listed in other agendas before, and it is not. No, the total list of the vouchers would be listed in the agenda, the larger version, the 300-page version, and it's not now. So somebody could come here and question publicly what is being paid, why?
Okay, so your question is the total amount being paid every two weeks?
Okay, that's still going to be.
That's what I'm asking, I'm asking you, I guess I'm asking you if that's what you're asking the Board.
Well, no, the total amount, that's great, but what I'm asking is the individual amount.
Yeah, and I'm saying to you, it's available to anybody who wants to inspect them. They're on file to county.
But why the change then?
From what? I guess, first of all, I'm relatively new, been here since July, but to the best of my knowledge, the bills are available for anyone to look at. I mean.
Yeah, I've been on the Board a while, and we never had it on our agenda, did you hear? No, because I was here longer than you.
It was governor's tenure as well.
I don't remember if the editor, I don't know if they're out there, but I mean, maybe it was, I don't remember.
I'll go back and help pull them up then again.
Regardless.
Yeah, I just want to make clear, I mean, there's nothing, nothing's being done or hidden from the public by any stretch of imagination. The full bill list is available to anybody in Sussex County that they can look at, or anybody else from the state for that matter. If the question is why is the entire list not attached to this particular, to any particular agenda, it starts because they're big incumbents, but they're always available if anybody wants to look at them though.
I'll read the other document next time that shows it, make sure it's always gone there.
With that said, though, transparency from the Commissioner Board is important. I did make note of that when it was brought to us at our last meeting, and I am exploring ways that we can post our bills online, to your point, and to Chris's point prior, transparency is key, and also we have nothing to hide with our bills list, we want to be transparent with it. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the floor for public comment?
Still move.
Commissioner Patillo moves. Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. Item nine on our agenda is our Commissioner comments, and as always, we'll start to my left with Commissioner Patillo.
Thank you. First, we have the Backpack Snacks for Kids. WSUS, WNNJ, and Max Radio stations are hosting the annual Backpack Snacks Food Drive to benefit the Social Services Food Pantry, which provides weekend meals for students on eight school districts, in eight school districts. The radio stations will be on-site collecting food at Weiss Markets in Franklin and Newton on Saturday, March 19th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. I want to stress the need of food for this particular program. We have had children in our schools who have reported that on the weekends, they're drinking sugar water because they don't have food, and it stops the hunger pains. So we've always had a great success in this, and I just want to remind you that it would be on the 19th at the Weiss Markets from 10:00 to 3:00 PM, and if you'd like to make a donation for food, we would greatly appreciate that. The Farmers Market Vouchers, there is a resolution on this evening's agenda for the Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program. This program is important for our senior citizens as it provides them the ability to purchase locally grown, fresh fruits, vegetables, and herbs. For more information, call the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555. For children, we have a Child Health Conference Clinic that will be held on Tuesday, March 15th, from 9:30 AM to 12:30 PM at the Office of Public Health Nursing. The clinic offers complete physical exams, screenings, and age-appropriate immunizations for children ages zero to five years old that are without health insurance. To make an appointment, just call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1211. A Health Check Clinic will be held on Tuesday, March 15th, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Office of Public Health Nursing at 201 Wheatworth Road in Hamburg. And the clinic offers vaccines for adults and school-aged children. There is no fee for vaccines if uninsured or underinsured. The clinic also offers a variety of health screenings. To make an appointment, call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1211. For the Environmental Health Rabies Report, for the month of February, there were 45 domestic or wild animal bites reported and investigated. Reports consisted of bites from dogs, there were 25, cats, seven, bats, five, a mule, a possum, and a skunk. Senior Services Caregiver Support Group will be held at Apagon Community Resource and Wellness Center, and that will be held in person at 47 Apache Road in Apagon from 5:30 PM to 6:30 PM on Tuesday, March 15th. And for more information or to register to attend these meetings, please call the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1288. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Patillo. Commissioner Fantasia?
Thank you. I'm going to start with Health Department updates. Again, the COVID updates, the Sussex County Division of Health, collaboration with Sparta Pharmacy continues to offer the drive-through COVID-19 vaccinations. The available vaccine options are all the manufacturers, from Moderna, Johnson &amp; Johnson, and Pfizer, first, second doses, and boosters. The clinics are being held on the following dates. It's going to be at the Sussex County Fairgrounds tomorrow, Thursday, March 10th, from 2:00 to 5:00. Liberty Towers in Newton, Wednesday, March 16th, from 10:00 to 1:00, and at the Division of Health Office of Public Health Nursing in Hamburg, Wheatworth Road, Wednesday, March 23rd, from 9:30 to 12:30. You can visit sussex nj.us, Public Health Nursing, and you can actually fill out a consent form in advance if you so choose to be vaccinated, and Public Health Nursing continues to provide homebound vaccinations. To give you the coronavirus update, the most recent New Jersey Department of Health Activity Level Report for COVID-like illnesses indicates the entire state, including our region, is coded yellow as of February 26th, 2022. We're always behind, they were about a week and a half behind from the reports that they release to the current date that we are at, so I would not be surprised if we are going to see the state green very, very soon, because we are reporting an average of 15 cases a day. So our hospitalizations, I think, really tell the tale more than anything. That seems to be a big question on everybody's mind. How many people are hospitalized? Well, so you can compare, you know, so far, we have one hospitalization in March so far. In February, we had 49, and in January, 207. So that kind of helps put in perspective, I know we're at the beginning of March, but that kind of puts in perspective as to the direction that we are going in. Now, I want to talk about outbreaks again. Outbreaks are defined when there are, contact tracing takes place and spread is proven to have taken place in that location. So it's not considered an outbreak if three people at your job have COVID, if all three of you caught it from home, from a spouse or from someone else. It actually has to be an outbreak within the facility and spread within that facility. So there's 20, quote, "outbreaks" in the county, one in an acute care facility, four long-term care facilities, staff and residents, three group homes, 11 schools and daycares, and one business. The lion's share again is Omicron, nearly 99% of tests that are being typed come back as Omicron, but a fair amount of testing is not even sent to the department for actual testing for variant. If you have any questions about booster shots, eligibility, vaccines, testing, everything COVID-19, as if we are not as weary as humanly possible about this, but if you still have any questions or concerns, our Office of Public Health Nursing continues to plow forward and do an excellent job making you aware of all the choices that are available to you here as a county resident. Please call 973-579-0570, extension 1211. Now, moving away from that, we had a kind of, interesting news came to me today from Carol Novretz. So the New Jersey Mosquito Association is actually highlighting Sussex County mosquito control surveillance in response to the Jamestown Canyon virus. Now, if you remember, Sussex County had the very unfortunate distinction of having the only fatality from that disease from a gentleman who passed. That mosquito pond actually was located in the Walk Hill Refuge, and the county surveillance and response is considered a model program of how to contain that virus and monitor that virus in the mosquito pool. So Paige Lockburner will be presenting the information on the 14th of March at the New Jersey Association's Annual Meeting and Conference. So it's not something we're proud to, you know, celebrate in Sussex County, to have a fatality due to that virus, but the response was swift, and Paige is highly respected across the state, and I think it'll be helpful to other counties as we identify these rare diseases that are found in mosquitoes. Now, just to give you a quick update, there is one day left for the Exposed Juried Photography Exhibit, and that's for the Sussex County Arts and Heritage Council. Remember that you have to be 18 and up, and your work will be displayed in the gallery. And with COVID restrictions, you know, being rolled back, I'm sure that the gallery will be open and flourishing. It's right on Spring Street, it's a beautiful space. So if you're a photographer, please submit your piece. Please go online to the Sussex County Arts and Heritage Council website, submit your photographs, and you'll have an opportunity to be displayed in the gallery. Also, something pretty interesting, the New Sussex Symphony is going to be hosting a concert in Sparta on Saturday at the high school. It's called Music for All Ages, and they do music all the way from Beethoven, all the way through to the Star Wars soundtrack. So they're doing, you know, just a wide variety that's really good for families, it's free for 12 and under, but for adults, I believe, let me see here, I didn't write down, oh, it's $15 for adults, 12 and under are free, and students and senior citizens are $10. So if you're interested, please visit Sparta High School this Saturday at 3:00 PM. It's, they're going to be hosting that there. Next, I would like to give you a little bit of an update, again, from District 24, being Chris and I the liaisons, I took it again this week for this meeting, to tell you a little bit of what was happening. Governor Murphy, we know that his budget address was postponed for some inexplicable reason, unbeknownst to any of us but Governor Murphy, and Senate and Assembly Republicans responded back, and their response was quick, and it was fierce. They discussed how New Jersey's credit rating has been downgraded twice under Governor Murphy, that school funding has been decreased for over 200 school districts, property taxes are absolutely not under control, as the governor has stated, nor has state debt been reduced. And despite having an extra $4.6 billion in unexpected tax collections, the governor proposed zero tax relief this year for our residents. They proposed a plan, Give It Back Plan, that would offer tax relief, it would return $3 billion to approximately 4 million taxpayers. So we would get refundable tax credits to the tune of $1,000 when we file our 2021 taxes. In direct opposition to that, Governor Murphy proposed $550 million in tax relief for 1.8 million people through something called an Anchor Rebate Plan, but the kicker is it's not this budget, it's the next budget. So hurry up and wait for half the number of residents, less than half, for, I don't know, one-eighth the amount. So I don't know about you, but on Team Give It Back Plan, sounds like we could use that relief. It provides five times as much tax relief. And again, it's frightening to me that, again, the middle class and a broader net is not thrown over for some tax relief. We all know what is happening with gas prices. We obviously pray for those in Ukraine who are suffering, we pray for that corner of the world. It in no way takes the sting out of the creeping gas prices here, and make no mistake, you can put lipstick on a pig, and it's still a pig, and our gas prices were growing at an incredibly ludicrous rate, immediately preceding the invasion into Ukraine, so we can blame Ukraine, but we should not be shamed into not just swallowing hard, was what the governor said that we should be doing, and accept these high gas prices in solidarity with the people of Ukraine. I find that to be completely ludicrous. We are all feeling the sting of it. We're in dollars and dollars more per gallon than where, you know, where we were prior to Murphy being re-elected, or Biden actually being where he is, is a bit of the problem there, but I'm not going to go crazy on national politics tonight because this is a Sussex County Commissioner meeting, so I won't go too crazy with that, but please keep in mind that it is our role when we are elected. We know we did have a lot of upheaval in New Jersey about when we were negotiating about a gas tax with the Democrats, and it could have been much, much worse. There were many administrations who kicked the can down the road instead of raising it incrementally a penny a year. Instead, we were really backed into a corner, and New Jersey did have the lowest gas prices when comparatively across the nation at the time, and it was a smart plan to be able to fund the TTF. However, here we sit with an administration that is holding us, you know, dependent on foreign oil. So I just would like to state for the record, because there's a lot of noise happening on some of our, you know, New Jersey websites, social media sites, that I do not feel as residents of New Jersey, we should be shamed into demanding reasonable, reasonable and affordable gas to commute. We are a commuter county, Sussex County is a commuter county, whether we like that, whether we don't. Often, people work in the city, and they do migrate up here to have a different lifestyle and a different way of life away from the noise and the congestion and the buzz, and it puts us particularly in a very, very difficult position. Sussex County is not a wealthy county overall, and it's very frustrating that we see our school funding taken, we see our hit in the taxes for this, and we feel the brunt because we are commuters. So I just ask for your voice, I ask you to make noise and be as loud as we are about your displeasure about how this is going, and that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fantasia. Commissioner Yardley?
Heating oil's up to $5 a gallon. So, I was at a Crime Stoppers meeting with Sheriff Estrada, and there's a new program that Crime Stoppers, that he has instituted. that Crime Stoppers, that he has instituted with Crime Stoppers. They have a board that Crime Stoppers sets up some of the programs, but the sheriff, it is the sheriff's program. And it allows people who are involved with or know of nursing home abuse, and you can report it anonymously to that, to the Crime Stoppers program, and you can go on the sheriff's website to see that. In addition to that, there'll be a Crime Stoppers Spring Reception for Thursday, May twelfth, six-thirty to eight at the Farmstead. So if you'd like to support Crime Stopper Program, please attend that. If I'm a little slow, no remarks, but don't have my glasses. So we're gonna go through this. There was a business-to-business breakfast at the Chamber. There were four new people that joined. There are up to over two-hundred members. It's a very viable program, working to improve the business atmosphere in the county and work with each business in the town. So we support your local businesses. Also, there was a Sussex County Economic Development Meeting, and they are working on a program by towns who will be raided, if they so choose, for their environmental development attitude toward businesses. If you would like to have businesses come to your community, you'll have a rating, and that will be voluntary. And there will be a quality control program on that. So that's something that you'll hear we'll be talking about. Also, there is a Veteran Services Case Management Program for Veterans on Wednesdays from ten AM to two PM, and you can talk to a health, case manager or healthcare navigator outreach worker from Catholic Charities and Community Services. And they'll be on-site at the Sussex County Administrative Center, one Spring Street, Newton. There's a number for, if you'd like to reach out for a social worker for additional information, nine-seven-three-five-seven-nine-zero-five-five-five. In addition to that, there is an affordable housing opportunity for disabled veterans and veterans' families in Wantage. There's a property that will feature four two-bedrooms, one-bath units that will be renovated for veterans to call home. It is for extremely low income, household two to four, two persons, twenty-five, three persons, twenty-eight thousand, four persons, thirty-one thousand. That is extremely low poverty level. However, if you know someone looking for a home that is a disabled veteran, I forwarded, I did forward this over to Social Services, and this is through Catholic Charities. You can also call Catholic Charities. I happened to be reading the news, and I read something recently about a facility in the county, and I thought I would share with you some of the headlines, or the words, what do you call that in front of the article? I call them headlines, mini-headlines, and what the conclusion is when we get to the end of all these headlines. Resident in Cardiac Arrest Left For Dead at Nursing Home. New Jersey Alleges in Scathing Report Citing White-Spread Abuse. Residents Are Extreme Risk. These are all separate articles. Feds Say As They Threaten To Essentially Shut Down The Troubled New Jersey Nursing Home. Admissions Halted At The Andover Nursing Home As Inspectors Report Disturbing Violations. New Jersey Nursing Home Blasted For Endangering Residents Gets A Reprieve For Now. Woodland Facility Funding Will Not Be Terminated For Now, But Compliance Hasn't Been Met. The Nursing Home License Was At Risk, State Officials In February Cited In An Immediate Jeopardy Situation In A Detailed Litany Of What They Called "Amusive, Neglectful Actions By Staff Members" That Place Residents Lives At Risk. Currently, the facility is not in compliance with the federal requirements, and concerns must take, must be made in order for the facility to continue to participate in the Medicare and Medicaid programs, CMS said in a statement to New Jersey Herald. The CMS, they're the people that regulate the Social Security, Senior Services, things of that nature. To reach compliance, the facility must create an action plan with solutions to significantly improve the issues identified by surveys, according to the letter. Among those corrections are improving the adequacy and competency of the facility staffing. Kind of sounds familiar. We may have heard this before. And the provisions of the services and management of the facility as it relates to quality of care, quality of life, and infection, prevention, and control. The facility must also make plans to prevent the abuse and neglect of the residents while improving their health and safety. Since September sixteenth, COVID-positive residents at Woodland have died, and three-hundred-and-ninety-six residents and staff members have tested positive, according to the data by the Sussex County Division of Health. The facility's outreach ended on February twenty-eighth, as the data shows. It seems that the federal government now, as long as the state, don't seem to care about what happens at this facility. I was just annoyed. I think it is unbelievable that here we are after so many deaths in that facility, and the federal government and the state cannot get control of it. I want you to imagine if you did something, any one of you, or if a town violated some regulation from the DEP, they'd be there in a heartbeat, and they'd drag their asses in court. This is unconscionable. It is a horrible thing that continues in our state. And I'd like to know from the governor why this hasn't been resolved. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Yardley. Deputy Director Carney.
Thank you, Director. I'll start with my Department of Engineering and Planning, Division of Public Works Winter Event Response Program update. Since November twenty-eighth, the Division of Public Works has activated crews in response to nineteen winter storm events, not including today's storm. The storms represent a cumulative in-service period of two-hundred-and-sixteen hours. Event response included activation of the sixty-six plow trucks tasked with the management of one-hundred-and-fifty-two defined plow routes. The response included the application of about eighty-five hundred tons of salt and twenty-four thousand five hundred gallons of liquid de-icing agents. Could just imagine the gas prices on that. Asset Management System, this has actually been going on for at least a year since I've been here, and I'll explain to you after I read this, I'll explain to you a little bit more. I'll simplify it for you, just to understand. It's a very good system. A major milestone has been reached in the ongoing efforts to implement a transportation asset management system within the Department of Engineering and Planning. The Division of Engineering has been spearheading the initiative, which, after extensive research and evaluation, has resulted in the selection and acquisition of an asset management system software platform. The new software integrates with and leverages the wealth of transportation-related asset information managed with the Department GIS system. When fully implemented, the new system is expected to significantly enhance the department's ability to track and manage workloads, allocate resources through the assignment of staff and equipment, monitor system needs, evaluate the efficiency of work assignments, and improve process management within all three department divisions. The new asset management system incorporates application, which will be deployed on handheld devices such as tablets and cellphones. This deployment provides a real-time link between the department's office staff and field staff. So that pretty much defines everything. So basically, if you have a GPS, you have a location. So GIS would kind of work the same. So if a DPW foreman or just employee goes out in their truck, and they see there was an accident last night, some guide rail needs to be fixed, that shoots back to the field department. They can fix it. Signs go down, people run the signs, that too, get logged. The location will be logged, and again, goes back to the field. And they can see what's new, what needs to be fixed, what's old, and so on and so forth. So it's a big database, really, but it's real-time, which is very nice. Twenty-twenty-two, you figured we have that. We have it now. On another note, with the bad weather, that was today. I was able to go down to the prosecutor's office, spend a little time with those folks. I want to put this on everybody's radar up here, whether you're here three years from now, or this year, however it may be. They definitely need a new facility. They are cramped in there like sardines, and the building is very, very old. Needs some remediation for sure. I know we've been talking with Administrator Poff, possibly about, you know, doing something with the jail. That needs to be sooner than later. I'm going to set up a walkthrough with Sheriff Estrada to take a look just at, you know, at the jail site, to see, just to get some ideas what's going on. I've never been there before, but I think that's gonna, that would be a very good place to get those people in. There's twenty, I think twenty-three prosecutors in there. I sat down with Francis Koch, Assistant Prosecutor, their captain, their sergeant today, and it was eye-opening, actually, what they do in there. Basically, a lot of stuff, but I won't go into that. I just want to touch on International Women's Day. You know, every day is some kind of day, you know, hug-your-dog day, ice cream day, or whatever it may be. But I think International Women's Day, actually, it matters. It's important. Maybe because I grew up, you know, with a single mother, but I depend on women a lot. A lot of women here, actually, Terri, Sylvia, Dawn, Carol, Elka, you know, they're important. I deal with these people every day. More dependable than men, actually, a lot more dependable than men, and they answer quicker, too. My sisters, you know, they always have my back, even though we don't see eye to eye when it comes to politics. I don't even think they'd vote for me, but they always have my back. So it's important. I just want to acknowledge that, all those women, internationally here and in this room. So I appreciate that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director Carney, and well said. And on International Women's Day, I just wanted to thank two mentors of mine right here on this board, Sylvia and Dawn, for being incredible leaders and for being some of the toughest people I know, period. I wanted to thank all who are joining us this evening. And finally, as you'll see on the top of our agenda tonight, masks are now optional at this facility here at Sussex County Community College, just as they are now at all county-owned facilities and many other institutions around us. The overarching and misguided mask mandate from Governor Murphy is over, thankfully, and I couldn't be happier about it, and I know many feel the same. It's been great to see some familiar faces again, and man, does it feel good to take a step toward normalcy for once, a trend that I hope continues. And speaking of trends I hope continue, as Dawn mentioned earlier, our region continues to see COVID case numbers that are much lower than weeks and months ago. As we spoke about previously, that has also resulted in a significant decline in demand for testing. Sussex County's testing location at the Sussex County Fairgrounds will continue to operate for about the next week or so, I believe. And of course, tests and vaccinations are and will continue to be available to any resident who would like one, and all of this information can be found right on our county COVID webpage, which is simply sussex nj.us/covid19. This week, I had, I was invited to take a visit to Northern Hills Academy, an amazing school for special needs students right here in Sussex County in Sparta, to celebrate Read Across America. I had a blast, truly, and I think the students did, too, as we read the Giving Tree. We talked about what we do here at the county level, what their goals are and what they hope to achieve. We talked about life, football, pretty much anything that you can imagine. We even got to experience a fire drill together. That was an interesting experience. But I wanted to thank those students and staff at Northern Hills Academy for inviting me, for welcoming me, and allowing me to see, just briefly, the amazing work that goes on in that school to help all of our students, all of our students in Sussex County, reach their full potential. This morning, I had the opportunity to visit the apartment complexes at two-twenty-five Spring Street in Newton. I was joined by representatives from the Sussex County Health and Human Services Division, County Council, the Sussex County Sheriff's Office, our local Legislative District Twenty-four Office, and staff members from the facility. We were there to support the residents who have called that facility home, and to see the issues that they've raised over the last few months resolved, even if we do not have the jurisdiction to resolve it ourselves at the county level. We toured the entire facility. We met staff and residents. We asked questions and offered our support and resources to the highest extent we can. It was a productive visit, and the staff from the facility were informative and knew that we were serious, and they were serious about resolving the issues raised from residents. I will be following up with council to determine next steps, and I want to continue to encourage residents to continue to come here and use this board as your sounding board for issues that you are experiencing. We do not accept that here in Sussex County, and that was made very clear today. Finally, well, last week, I had the opportunity to speak with the President of the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce, Tammy, who is fantastic, as we know. I shared with her that the board is preparing to help our business community in the wake of this pandemic by offering a small business assistance grant program from Sussex County, and I asked for her assistance in creating that program. Those conversations will be starting shortly, and I'm really looking forward to it because we know, as Herb mentioned, our business community has struggled over the last two years like never before, and we have those surveys, and we have those polls from our businesses. And I believe an investment like this in our local economy is exactly what's needed today, and it is the closest thing we have to a guaranteed return on investment. So it's a big priority for us. Finally, tonight, the board is introducing its budget for first reading, and I'm extremely proud of all the effort our budget team and the commissioners up here with me put into this budget, and I can say confidently that fiscal responsibility, protecting the taxpayer, and the county's financial positioning are all prevalent, even in the face of significant mandated cost increases in health insurance, workers' comp, liability, pensions, state psychiatric expenses, et cetera. I know we have a presentation tonight, but I thought it would be important just to share a little bit what numbers necessarily won't, and the priority is that this budget calls to be accomplished. As Chris mentioned, it continues the development of an asset management system within our engineering and planning. It supports our public works with staffing resources to fulfill highway occupancy permit requirements. It provides funding for ongoing expenses associated with legacy site remediation projects. It maintains the level of funding for debt service and capital improvements consistent with the board's adopted debt policy. It implements additional risk control initiatives to promote occupational health and safety. It increases employee training and professional development opportunities. It continues automation efforts in employee services and payroll. It calls for the development of grant policies and a procedure manual to improve compliance. It calls for the strategic planning in the area of information technology, including staffing. It enhances and reinstates community services interrupted during the pandemic. Gives our social services the ability to adapt training more effectively to meet customer needs. It calls for the program development of our overdose facility review team, a really important team when it comes to overdoses in the county. It calls for the Division of Health to continue its accreditation process, and improves integrated pest management for a more effective response to mosquito-borne diseases, as Dawn mentioned. It increases the awareness of our Skylands Ride Transportation Services, which is becoming more and more important to our residents and our transportation infrastructure. It develops architectural plans for the Dennis Library renovation project, the largest capital renovation in thirty years in Sussex County, and again, I think with a guaranteed return on investment. It calls for the appropriate and immediate response to all weather events, as Chris was talking about, specifically snow and ice control, to ensure public safety. It continues the annual pavement marking program, inspection, repair, and cleaning of stormwater basins within the county collection system. It continues to advance significant guide rail repairs and replacements. It calls for capital investments in the maintenance and repair of our county facilities. It assesses the effectiveness of new trail grant programs within the Division of Planning. It complies with the demands created from the state in acting early voting and vote by mail. It increases funding for patients in state psychiatric hospitals, as mandated by the state. It supports Sussex County Technical School and this institution, two really, really important academic institutions. two really, really important academic institutions in Sussex County. It increases pay-as-you-go funding for capital projects and calls for us to continue to pay down our debt. Also makes required pension payments. Numbers don't necessarily tell you that, but a lot of the work that we put in to this budget is built to ensure that it gives Sussex County the foundation that it needs this year, which is a recovery year. That's a big, big point of emphasis this year. When it's small business assistance to helping our staff have more professional development opportunities and everything else in between, that really means a lot to this organization and the health of this organization and its ability to provide for its residents. So with that, I'll conclude my public remarks this evening. We'll move on. Two item I should also mention, just very briefly, I wanted to make a note that the Board's April 13 meeting has been canceled and has been rescheduled to April 6th at 6:00 PM, a week earlier, right here. With that, we're on to item 10 on our agenda, which is the approval of our consent agenda. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the consent agenda consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. If any commissioner would like to remove an item to be considered separately, please do so now. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda A and B?
So moved.
Commissioner Patilla moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. Item 11 on our agenda is the approval of our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting and executive session meeting of February 23rd?
So moved.
Commissioner Patilla moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. Item 13 on our agenda is our resolutions. Do we have a motion to adopt items 13A through H?
So moved.
Commissioner Patilla moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? Terri, can you please call the roll?
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Item 14 on our agenda is the awards of contract change orders and bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the awards of contract change orders and bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Do we have a motion for items 14A and B?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second? Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? Terri, can you please call the roll?
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Item 15 is payment of the bills list. Do we have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Commissioner Patilla moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? Terri, can you please call the roll?
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Next on our agenda is item 15B, and that is the presentation of the 2022 county budget. With that, I'm going to call up Administrator Poff, and you as well. You're just a clicker.
Was it something I said?
He wants a better view.
Oh, okay. I believe each of the commissioners has a copy of the presentation. All right. Well, good evening. It's my privilege to be able to share this budget summary with the Board and the public. Each year, the Board of County Commissioners is required by law to adopt a county budget. The Budget Subcommittee comprised of two commissioners and administrative staff prepares recommendations in the form of a draft budget, and the Board must ensure that the adopted budget satisfies the needs and the interests of the county. Similar to prior years, when the focus has been on sustaining programs and services, the 2022 budget does just that. It maintains and, in a few areas, enhances service levels. This year's budget included departmental goals and objectives, contributing to the Board's expectations of financial accountability, meeting the demands of our taxpayers, and investing in the county's infrastructure. So if Elka would go...
As the Board is aware, and certainly members of the public who have heard these budget presentations before, we have a rather significant budget calendar that is months in the making to get us to the point where the Board can consider the introduction and approval of the county budget. That process begins in August, when the guidance is issued from the Office of Budget Management out to the various departments, divisions, and agencies to prepare their budget submissions. Then in September, the operating budget proposals are due. And then through the month of September, those proposals are compiled and put into those monstrous budget books that the Budget Subcommittee receives, which allows us then to meet, the Budget Subcommittee to meet in October, reviewing those budget submittals. And at the same time, then, the capital proposals are due. Once those department hearings are held in October, then the Capital Budget Subcommittee meets in November to review the capital improvement program. And by that time, then, in December, the Budget Subcommittee reviews to meet the impact of the budget and look at what is, comes close to being the final draft. In January, then, the Budget Subcommittee reconvenes once the year is closed out and we have a sense as to where revenues are going to be, that the draft budget is then finalized. In February, the Subcommittee's review the proposed budget, make any final changes. And typically, in February is when we hold our budget work session, which we did this past February. And that leads us then to this evening, where the budget is considered for introduction and approval. Upon the public presentation of the budget, then, a public hearing is scheduled, and in this case, it'll be April 6th, where we need to update that slide. Instead of Board of Chosen Freeholders, needs to be the County Commissioners will hold their public hearing and the adoption of the county budget. Again, as the commissioners are certainly aware, and the public may be aware, the county is subject to several laws that affect the county budget. There is the 1977 cap that prohibits the county from increasing property, the property tax levy greater than two and a half percent unless separate action is taken by the County Commissioners. The 2010 cap that establishes a formula limiting the increases in the amount to be raised by taxation to two percent of the previous year. And then the 2017 county entity cap, which limits the annual increases to the portion of certain county entities that include the Sheriff's Office, the County Clerk's Office, the Surrogate's Office, the Prosecutor's Office, the County Tax Board, and the Board of Elections. And so it's with all of those caps that the county has to put its budget together. The state has issued its guidance documents regarding the budgetary caps, and the cost of living adjustment for calendar year 2022 is calculated out at two and one-half percent. So in other words, the automatic increase to the 1977 cap base is two and a half percent, which is the statutory maximum. The Board of County Commissioners may pass a COLA resolution, which you all did, increasing the cap base to three and a half percent. And that is done not to increase the budget or the tax levy to three and a half percent, but allows us to be able to take the difference from the amount of taxes to be raised up to that limit in cap banking. Cap banking used to be automatic, but when the budget law was amended, that automatic cap banking was no longer permitted. And so therefore, the commissioners consider that resolution as one of several budgetary tools that you use to protect the long-term fiscal health of the county. That cap bank provides the needed flexibility in future budget cycles and supports tax rate stability. And I'm pleased to report that the county is within all of the permitted budgetary caps. So the budget is broken into two component pieces, revenues and appropriations. The 2022 county budget totals $117,470,359. This represents a 2% increase or $2,341,376 increase from the adopted 2021 budget. Total operations are up $1.8 million from the adopted 2021 budget. Eighty-five percent of that increase in total operations is due to the escalation of group health insurance, liability and workers' comp insurance, and also for the maintenance of patients in state psychiatric institutions. You can see from the pie chart that eighty-five percent of the budget is supported by the county purpose tax. And again, it's important for the Board to remember and the public to know that that is prescribed by the state of New Jersey. It's not a determination that's made by this Board. And in fact, the vast majority of county operations is supported by property tax as a result of state statute. You'll find the other component pieces of revenues, which include offset with appropriations, which represent the grant funds that the county will receive during 2022. You have state aid, and for counties, that is comprised of two primary pieces, which are franchise fees that come from insurance companies, as well as the state's contribution to the Chapter 12 program, which provides for capital improvements to this institution, the college. We have miscellaneous revenues that comprise four percent, that are a variety of revenues that are collected by the various county departments and agencies. And then fund balance, which is $7,200,000 or six percent of the total budget. So we'll drill down on fund balance just a little bit, as that is an important component piece of the overall revenues that the county relies upon and helps offset property taxes. So the, understanding the generation of fund balances is rather important. And fund balance comes from three component pieces: the lapsing of appropriation reserves, revenues in excess of budgeted amounts, and miscellaneous revenues that otherwise were not anticipated. So the county's fund balance at the end of 2021 was $18.9 million or 14.1%. So therefore, the fund balance anticipated in this budget is $7.2 million, which is $1 million more than last year. And if we go to the next slide, you can see why we're recommending the additional fund balance being used. This chart shows both the fund balance history as well as the use of fund balance as anticipated revenue, with the green bars representing what the amount of fund balance was at the close of those years, and then the orange line representing the amount of fund balance that was used as a revenue in those years' budgets. So you can see from 2012 to 2021 that fund balance has increased. And as the line then demonstrates, the county has begun to use more fund balance to offset property taxes in a proportional way to the amount of fund balance that's being generated. In 2021, at the conclusion of 2021, the county had seen very strong revenue returns in excess of what was anticipated, particularly in the Sheriff's Office and the County Clerk's Office. And we also had lapsing appropriation reserves that also contributed to the increase in fund balance. So as previously said, the 2022 budget represents a 2% increase from the adopted 2021 budget. You'll see that the total budget, as previously mentioned, is at $117.5 million. The tax levy, which is two component pieces, the amount to be raised in taxation, along with the additional revenues that will come from new construction that has been added to the county's ratable base. So the tax levy is proposed at $99.7 million. The ratable base has also increased to $19.1 billion. And the estimated tax rate per $100 is .5218. So as I said, the county budget comes in two forms, one of revenues and one of appropriations. And as required by law, revenues and appropriations must equal. So the total appropriations for the 2022 budget total $117,470,359. And you can see the various component pieces that comprise total appropriations. Capital, debt service, and statutory expenditures, those statutory expenditures being pension costs comprise 21%. Utilities and other common expense, 2%. Educational, which supports the technical school as well as the college, 10%. Health and welfare, 5%. Public works is 12%. Public safety is 19%. Insurance, which again is in three pieces, workers' compensation, liability, and group health insurance is 18%. General government is 10%. And then the offset by revenue is the appropriation that represents the expenses for the various grants that the county will receive in the calendar year. We then just break down what the allocation of a tax dollar is. And while I won't go through all of it, you can see that the largest portions that go, that are provided to out of the county budget are for capital debt and statutory expenditures and public safety, along with insurance, that compose over 60% of the total budget. And then the smallest pieces being health and welfare and utilities and other common expenses, which is a little more than a nickel. So we wanted to talk about some of the budget highlights, and I probably should just ask the Director to come up and deliver the balance of the presentation, because he did such a good job highlighting some things. You know, as the Director had said, while you, we certainly spent a lot of time on the numbers. Those numbers translate into programs, and those programs represent the, really, the policy statement of the Board. I've always maintained that the Board's adoption of the budget represents the most significant policy statement that the Board will adopt in any given year. So as we talked about the various component pieces of the budget, out of general government, there are a couple of highlights. The first is strategic planning efforts that are being conducted in the Division of Information Technology. This builds upon work that was started last year and is particularly timely... This builds upon work that was started last year and is particularly timely, given the retirement of the county IT director at the end of last year. We've also talked about, and you've heard about enhancements to employee training regarding purchasing regulations. And this is not only to ensure statutory compliance, but also that the purchasing that the county does is as effective and efficient as possible, ensuring the protection of county tax dollars. Looking at our engineering and public works group, this budget will provide support with staffing resources to our public works, our bridge and traffic safety group, as well as our forestry group, that contribute to the county's ability to fulfill the highway occupancy permit requirements. And as Commissioner Carney mentioned, there are funds to continue the county's development of an asset management system, which will make our expenditures within the Department of Engineering and Planning that much more effective. We've talked about capital improvements. This board and prior boards have really placed great emphasis on maintaining funding for debt service and capital improvements that are consistent with the board's adopted debt policy. There are significant contributions towards building improvements at a number of county facilities. And I would like to highlight, as Commissioner Carney had mentioned, there are monies within the capital budget for an architectural study to look at the adaptive reuse of the corrections facility. There is continued investment in the county's transportation infrastructure, which includes road resurfacing, as well as the replacement of bridges. There is support, and we saw that in the appropriations slide, for the educational institutions that include the technical school, as well as the community college. And there are component pieces in the capital improvement program as well for both of those institutions. And then we are advancing the second phase of the replacement of an obsolete, low-band radio system for the Division of Public Works, which also will help improve the operational efficiency for the Office of Bridge and Traffic Safety and our forestry group as So in the Department of Health and Human Services, there are a number of various different groups and offices. This highlights just a few in terms of the Division of Health continuing its vaccination clinic at the fairgrounds. And as that wraps up, we will continue to provide pop-up clinics throughout the county, not only with COVID vaccine, but with annual flu vaccine and other vaccines that are available through the Office of Public Health Nursing. And then also, as was talked about before, and I'm very happy to hear that Paige Lockburner will be making a presentation on mosquito control, because there's nobody more qualified than her to speak on that. This budget provides resources for mosquito control, and our Office of Mosquito Control is dedicated to reducing mosquito populations, which in turn promote public health, and also facilitate the enjoyment of the county's vast natural resources. That picture is one of the inspectors at a mosquito trap as part of the surveillance that the Office of Mosquito Control is involved with. The Division of Social Services supports the work of our very dedicated volunteers at the food pantry. And each month, that pantry serves between 1,500 and 2,000 people, eight school systems, two after-school programs, one preschool program, and 27 local food pantries and community organizations. The county provides the facility for the food pantry to operate and is very much dependent upon the good work that the volunteers provide in social service supplements as needed. We look at the Office of Transit. That was mentioned before, our Skylings Ride. Having celebrated its 40th anniversary last year, New Jersey Transit has confirmed, in fact, that Sussex County Office of Transit travels more miles in a given year than any other transit group in the state of New Jersey. That's a function of how spread out we are, talking about the natural resources that we have to enjoy, but it does take its toll on county transit vehicles. We're in the process of a transportation planning study, which will assess our transit system, solicit community feedback, and develop recommendations for the Office of Transit and the Department of Health and Human Services to consider. We'll also be looking to purchase a new transit scheduling system, which will allow us to develop more efficient routes, increase on-time performance, and improve passenger satisfaction. I'm looking forward to the conclusion of that, that report and the recommendations that are contained therein. In the Department of Engineering and Planning, we've talked a little bit about the Office of Bridge and Traffic Safety. This budget supports the in-house pavement marking program, and that program is focused specifically on providing resilient and wear-resistant pavement markings, which provides an extended service life for those markings and provides improved performance and promotes general traffic safety. To give you just a small snapshot of what they do outside of the striping program, they will replace approximately 2,000 signs this year, again, supported out of the appropriations for this budget, out of a total of 14,000 traffic signs that are in service in the county's transportation infrastructure. So when we talk about the county's transportation infrastructure, we're talking about a lot of things. We're talking about roads, we're talking about bridges, we're talking about line striping, and the signs. They're all an integral part of the overall county's transportation infrastructure. Continuing on with the Division of Public Works, they have an in-house asphalt patching program, which uses a hot box as part of the pavement repair program and allows for extended service life of asphalt services. We talked about the highway occupancy permit, and the storm water inlet program is a component piece of that, where we rent a combined sewer jet and vac truck and have trained staff in the operation of that equipment, which has proven extremely successful and has allowed us to continue to comply with the requirements that's set forth by the State Department of Environmental Protection. In the Department of Central and Shared Services, we talked a little bit about IT before. And in our Office of Records Management, which is part of the Division of Information Technology, there is a proposal to upgrade our document management system, which we know is on-base. And that software and the improvement to that will allow for the integration of document management with the county's existing geographic information system. And that will allow for the geolocation of 76,000 county parcels to the 12 million document pages that are maintained by the county. So it's going to be really a wonderful integration of two systems that we're very much looking forward to and making that information available to the public. We've talked about the educational support that the county provides to both the college and the technical school, and just wanted to highlight a program from each of those institutions. Sussex County Community College is very pleased to announce their electrical lineman program. This program was developed in partnership with Sussex Rural Electric and Walkeville Valley Regional High School and was available starting this fall. It will support the needs of the electric utility industry, specifically Sussex Rural Electric with a skilled workforce. And the program will be located on the campus of Walkeville Valley Regional High School and will present dual enrollment opportunities for participants. Talking about the technical school, with the support that the county provides, the technical school, they are able to offer 30 dual enrollment courses through a partnership with both Sussex County Community College and NJIT. And they also now, very much like the college, have entered into a partnership with Thor Labs, as well as a concurrent agreement with the college, that the technical school is now able to offer an optics course this year. So again, a lot of very interesting, innovative things that are happening in the county's educational institutions. So that takes care of an overview of what the general operating budget supports, and we'll talk now about the capital improvement program. A very important part of the county's financial management is its capital improvement program, which provides for the development of a budget for major capital projects or acquisitions, and then also providing for the funding of those capital projects through a combination of current funds and debt financing. The capital expenditures include the college, the technical school, a variety of county government projects, and the site remediation program that has been ongoing for a number of years. The 2022 capital program totals $24,851,144, with new debt authorized not to exceed $8,970,000. And that is certainly below the self-imposed limit that the board has put on the county in terms of not borrowing in excess of $10 million. And through some very good work that Elka has done and the board's commitment to its debt policy, we have been able to begin to pay for more of our capital projects in cash, which has helped reduce the amount of debt, the new debt that the county will otherwise Very similar to the appropriations, you see the various component pieces of the county's 2022 capital program. We've touched upon the various improvements that will be done at the technical school, as well as the college. Those capital improvements are focused specifically on their infrastructure. And with the college, a component piece of that is providing monies for the securing our children's future bond grant award that the college received. We had provided similar type matching funds to the vocational school last year. We have roads and bridges, which represent about a third of the total capital program of just over $8.5 million, along with our facility improvements that will support improvements to the parking deck at the judicial center, a number of roofs that are in need of repair or replacement, along with a variety of other facility improvements, including security at a number of county facilities. The other component pieces include technology, finalizing the replacement of all of the county's election equipment, public safety improvements, as well as the replacement of heavy equipment and vehicles. And you'll see sort of the county top 10 capital projects in the next slide. As we've mentioned, facility improvements of $4 million, bridge replacements of just over $3.5 million, road resurfacing of $2 million, guide rail maintenance that has been an ongoing focus over the last few years of a rather obsolete and antiquated system of $1.6 million, along with the various improvements to the schools, the replacement of heavy vehicles and equipment, as well as the replacement of that obsolete radio system, which is in Phase Two and should be finalized this year. So as presented, the budget totals $117,470,359, again, representing a 2% increase over the adopted 2021 budget. All of the increase can be captured in just a few of those line, the appropriation lines, which include insurance, workers' compensation, liability, group health insurance, the maintenance of patients in state psychiatric institutions. That alone represents more than a $2 million increase. And so that concludes this evening's presentation. The budget is available for inspection in the clerk of the board's office, and we look forward to April 6th, when the county is scheduled to have its public hearing and consider adoption of the 2022 budget. Thank you.
Greg, just a quick question. It's a 2% budget increase?
2% budget increase.
What's the tax increase?
The amount to be raised in taxes outside of the new construction, which is the additional revenue the county will realize, is 1.85%.
Thank you.
Greg, can you just expand just a bit? Being that it's a $2 million increase, we're very much back to our budget from two years ago, that, you know, that total amount. The increases, again, that make up the lion's share of that psychiatric hospitals, the insurance, can you expound on that a bit?
Sure. We saw a rather significant increase in group health insurance, and that's simply based upon the county employees and retirees' use of that. It's something that we review annually with our health insurance broker. We saw last year a small number, it was maybe about two dozen or so individuals using about 75% of the claims paid. So that's really what drove the increase in the group health insurance. We were, in addition to that, we've seen a hardening in the insurance market for our liability and workers' compensation insurance. That is consistent with what we've seen elsewhere. The county continues, even though we've seen a larger increase this year than what we've seen in years past, the county still benefits from its participation in the statewide joint insurance fund. So that helps limit some of the increases, even though we've seen a larger increase this year. And then the county, as mandated by the state of New Jersey, is required to provide for the Sussex County residents who find themselves institutionalized in state psychiatric hospitals. That is the work that is performed by the county adjuster. The adjuster, in fact, adjusts those bills to ensure that the costs that are imposed by the state of New Jersey, in fact, represent the bona fide expenses that Sussex County is required to pay under law. And so this year, Sussex County, along with about half of the other counties in the state, saw rather significant increases in what our required payment is for the maintenance of patients in state psychiatric institutions.
Now for that, if memory serves me, when we were going over the numbers in our meetings, we're talking at the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars for state psychiatric support for people who are having psychiatric issues or in crisis. I think it is very indicative of, you know, the result of what's been happening over the past couple of years, even with the pandemic, we see those increase, those costs increasing. Also, you said for the dozen or two dozen or so employees who, you know, I know with insurance, it's a negotiation, you know, with brokers where it's risk, right, versus the reward that they get. But I can say, in light of the pandemic and the work that these employees do and the residents who require the psychiatric support, this board has a duty to support those individuals, you know, they're our residents, and even our employees who give so much. At any time, any of us could, you know, some type of health malady could affect any of us. You know, emergencies and health emergencies don't make an appointment, and I'm grateful and glad that we do have coverage in place to help support people who served us so well. So when we see costs like that, I don't enjoy seeing that our rates go up, but I So when we see costs like that, I don't enjoy seeing that our rates go up, but I understand why, and I think that it is extraordinarily valid and important that we have those health services available to our employees.
The, the total appropriation for the maintenance of patients in state psychiatric institutions for 2022 is $1,223,809, which is up from the adopted 2021 budget of $802,012. So it's a, almost a $422,000 increase in just that one line item alone.
Thank you.
Herb, anything from you? Anything from you? Thank you, Greg.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We are now on to item C on our agenda, which is the introduction of the 2022 county budget for first reading. The 2022 Sussex County budget is being introduced for first reading at this time and awaits approval by the board. The 2022 Sussex County budget revenues and appropriation summary will be advertised in the New Jersey Herald issue of March 11th, 2022. With that, is there a motion to introduce this resolution on first reading?
So.
Commissioner Patillo moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Will this be on our website or just published?
Will what be on our website?
The presentation?
The presentation, yes.
And the budget?
And the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Right? Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Terry, can you please call the roll?
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Item passes, and now I need a motion to authorize the clerk to advertise the budget revenues and appropriation summaries as introduced for first reading, and also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the county administrative center, together with a notice of public hearing stating that a hearing on the budget and tax resolution will be held at the Performing Arts Center of Sussex County Community College at One College Hill, Newton, New Jersey, on Wednesday, April 6th, 2022, at 6:00 PM, at which time and place objections to said budget and tax resolution for the year 2022 may be presented by taxpayers and other interested persons. Do we have that motion?
Still move.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. Our next two items on our agenda are items 15D and E. Do we have a motion to adopt resolutions 15D and E?
So move.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Terry, can you please call the roll?
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 16 on our agenda is personnel, in which we have none. Item 17 on our agenda is our administrative report. Greg, do you have anything else to add?
I'll allow the presentation to stand as my report.
Thank you, Greg. Item 18 is our county council report. County council, do you have anything for us?
Something public to see.
Thank you, Doug. Do we have any unfinished business? Do we have any new business?
I do. I wanted to ask if any other commissioner had signed up to judge the 4-H presentations. We received information about that. I signed up. They're doing it virtually. They're also doing a live presentation at one of the high schools where individuals can present, but they had over 80 projects submitted by Sussex County 4-H members. I volunteered to do two of the formats, but they did ask me to judge the virtual presentations because apparently they received a huge amount of virtual. So they're sending the videos the week after March 15th. I have until April 8th to judge and present, but that's a, that's a huge uptick and really proud of our, of our young people here in Sussex County to put those 4-H presentations together. I'm looking forward to judging, and I'll share my, my experience with the board after.
Are they looking for how many more judges on?
I'm not sure if they're looking for more. I know there was a cutoff in this Friday, I believe is the first round of public, but they may still be looking for virtual judges for after the 15th, so I can forward you the email and the contact.
Yeah, we can talk.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, Don.
Sure.
Any other new business? I had something, I just wanted to go back to Herb's remarks earlier regarding Woodland Behavioral, and I agree with everything Herb said. I'm equally appalled at the lack of progress and the conditions there at Woodland Behavioral. So what I wanted to, I guess, ask is to ask council in a broad way to explore every viable option, to discuss with other commissioners, with us, with other commissioner boards, to consult with other department heads and division heads here in the county, with other governing bodies involved, with the stakeholders that you know to be involved, and to come back to us with a complete, yeah, in light of what Herb is saying and in light of how the situation is developing and has been developing over the last month and a half. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
Is the commissioner?
I want to add something. This board has worked, so people know, very hard on this issue, went, supported the health department during very critical times when the state didn't respond, and I want the board to know that what I was talking about was not anything directed at our actions, but it's strictly the governor who, who just has not gotten this thing taken care of or resolved.
I know, I know that.
Okay.
But still, it's still not taken care of or resolved.
It's not taken care of.
Director Fasano, I asked council to just share about our dates now for our re-request to the state.
Correct. I apologize to the, we have the same one, okay. Yes, so this is in response to your public question that had to do with some Oprah requests from the State Department of Health. We had resubmitted those requests through my office just a short time ago. We received a request from the State Department of Health of, for an extension of time to respond, they asked, they indicated that responses would be, those responses that they're willing to provide, if any, would be in by March 25. On February 23, the Office of Health, Safety, Survey and Field Operations contacted our office asking whether that, our request was asked for information that was in the request that had precipitated your public question candidly, and we indicated that it was because they had failed to respond. So they're asking for additional time yet again to try to compile that information. I am not holding my breath, Commissioner, that we'll get it, and I will be prepared to tell you exactly what we can do about that in two weeks, because there are steps that we can take to pursue the county's interests.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, item 21 is public session from the floor. This is our second public session, and this public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees, and when you arrive, state your name and municipality for the record. Is there a motion to open the floor for public comment?
So move.
Commissioner Patillo moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries, and the floor is open. Yes, ma'am.
Hi there, my name is Sandy Hall. I live in Sandyston Township. There's currently a move underway engineered by the Pennsylvania and New Jersey chapters of the Sierra Club to change the designation of the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area to that of a national park. Please pay attention to this next part. In January, the Warren County Commissioners voted to support the designation change. When I requested a copy of the resolution, it was noted that Congressman Gottheimer had met with John Donahue of the Sierra Club and Commissioners before the meeting where the resolution was passed. I reached out to the Sierra Club in February 23, requesting information on the designation change, and I received an email stating that there was no plan at this time, there were no maps or any specifics available. I contacted the Sierra Club again on March 1st for more information. I have not received a reply. In mid-February, I reached out to the National Park Service in Bushkill and received the following statement, in part, "There are no National Park Service documents pertaining to this proposal since we are not involved in it." In early March, I reached out to Congressman Gottheimer's office for assistance. I was told he has no position at this time. National parks do not allow hunting. This national park would have a quote-unquote preserve area where hunting and fishing would be allowed. Other consumptive uses such as agricultural use are not permitted. In 2014, the Park Service, under the guidance of then-superintendent Donahue, published Vision 2030 as a master plan for the recreation area. Many of the proposals in that document have been challenged and defeated due to public concerns stated in hearings, notably the suggested fee structure presented in the visitor use management plan. The vision of the proposed national park led by Sierra Club member John Donahue parallels, in some cases, those of Vision 2030. My concerns are this. Where is the plan to facilitate this change? There are 108 national parks and most are fee-based and have gated entry. What is the fee structure? Where would the fee collection stations be located? How will visitor entry be controlled? How will reduced hunting, especially deer, impact our agricultural community? What are the economic benefits, if any, to our community? What is the impact of the designation change to existing public lands, Stokes State Forest, High Point State Park, and state fishing game lands? What are the parameters and the location of this preserve area? How will this national park be funded? Since the national park boundaries are determined by Congress, it's not inconceivable that park boundaries could be expanded under public law 91646, the Law of Eminent Domain, which as you all know was horribly abused during the Tox Island Dam project, to compensate for the loss of quote-unquote huntable acres. This could mean the loss of more tax ratables in the municipalities that are now bordering the recreation area. Until the Sierra Club can provide an implementation plan for the new park and provide an environmental impact statement, an economic impact statement, and an agricultural impact statement, I respectfully request the Sussex County Commissioners to request those documents from the Sierra Club and pass a resolution to protest the change until the requested information is received and/or public hearings are held. I can leave this with your clerk for?
Please.
Commissioner, may I?
Yeah.
That's for Terry, I want to ask her something.
Thank you, ma'am.
If I could just make a comment. Terry, if it's possible, to scan that and send it to us. We were aware of Warren County, I was, you know, I did receive that. Your statement here was concise, it was well-prepared. I share so many of your concerns, all valid, and thank you for bringing this again, you know, to our attention. I hear you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Snyder, also Sandyston. I'd like to thank Ms. Hall also for her comments. I support her wholeheartedly.
My question is on item number 12 on your agenda. Someone could explain it to me?
Well, it's not Q and A, sorry. It's an opportunity for you to make statements, but.
Questioning, because I can't find it.
Yes, just because it's a typo.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, oh.
Missing.
It's missing. Gotcha.
Hi, Christina Marks, Franklin, New Jersey. I wanted to come back to the board regarding an item that I had brought up at the last session regarding the bill list. I had done a little bit more research, and I'm concerned as a taxpayer that that bill list is not made public prior to the board voting on it, and it's not made public after the board votes on it to be reviewed. If you look on the Morris County website, on, under their commissioner tab, you'll see that there is a tab specifically for bill list where their constituents can go on, tap that tab, and see every bill that is being approved by the commissioner board. The other topic that I did want to bring up, I'm speaking as president of CWA 1032. It was interesting to hear Administrator Poff's presentation to the board regarding the budget, but there were a couple items that were concerning that I did want to bring to the board's attention. One of them had to do with the highlighting of the increase with the insurance rates for employees specifically. One of the items that I've been fighting for over the past couple of years that I've noticed is that the bargaining unit agreed through bargaining to change and overhaul how our insurance is being handled by the county. Unfortunately, not all members and all employees were moved into those new plans, which could have saved the board, the county and the taxpayers a significant amount of money for the last couple of years when those changes were made, and those changes were made in July of 2020. In addition, in the preparation of this budget, there was a completely new provision that was added this year, and that was a memo that went out to all the departments advising them that they were not permitted to budget, even if their budget's allowed, salary adjustments for represented employees. They were only allowed to put in through salary adjustments for non-represented employees, for administrative roles, which is something that, you know, is very disconcerning, especially to employees that are working very hard to provide services to the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Flash.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Susan Kelly at 225 Spring Street, and I'm actually up here not to complain, but to thank you all for standing up and backing us. I know your hands are tied, along with the other organizations, but we do want you to know how much we appreciate the help that you have given us and the backing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to speak about something that happened last week. It was nice that we had the budget first reading. However, last week, there was something listed as a presentation which turned into an ask for money. It wasn't listed on the agenda as that, it was something from Sussex County Municipal Authority. A gentleman came up, said, hey, we may have overruns, and it was to the $24 million, which is roughly 3.4% of this current budget. I'm asking why that wouldn't have been held over, and I think that there was some conflict of interest there with some people voting on it when they had, were married to somebody presenting it. Not a very good optic. Not a very good optic.
Thank you.
I would like to respond to that. I'm able to vote on that because my husband does not receive any benefit from that. I cannot vote on my husband as an appointed physician.
Okay.
Did the state from the border go up or not? Just a bad optic, Sylvia, other people follow that. Sorry, just tell you the way it is.
We're going to move on to our next speaker.
Hi, good evening, Barbara Holstein from Montague. Apologize for coming in late, but I did review the agendas from both the last meeting and this meeting, and I'm actually really glad that I'm here to hear Ms. Hall's comments regarding the park, the National Park Service, because it's something that's been brought to my attention as a resident of Montague and someone who's very outspoken in Montague. This is definitely something I am against, okay? And I think that her comments and her statement, I'm going to reach out to her, I'm going to work with her, we're going to fight this the same way they fought Tox Island. I did a full re- I did a full report with my sixth graders when I was teaching about Tox Island. I know the whole story. I know the history. It's disturbing to think of what they want to come in and do and national park this. We don't have enough open space in Sussex County anymore. Our county is being encroached upon from every corner. All I hear is that we're losing population, and all I see is development and new construction. I don't understand. They're oxymorons. They don't fit. I also do not understand some of the things that I've seen here, so that means I'm probably going to become a regular here, too. And for some of you who know me, I will hold you accountable to the things that I see that I don't think are right, and I definitely think that Mr. Hayden spoke just now about what I... That's why I originally came here tonight, because I feel that's not, it's not just that it's not good optics, but it didn't give the public the opportunity to comment and/or hear what you were, what was being presented and then comment on it. So the way I understood what happened, it should have been tabled and put to this meeting, just a hindsight. So a presentation was done, more money was asked for. It shouldn't have been voted on at the last meeting. It should have been done at this meeting so that the public would have time to come in and comment on it. You also have new voting machines. I hope that you're not just spending $100,000-some dollars on new voting machines, and you're not going to look at the voting integrity of the county. Years ago, I sat as a challenger in Montague. I reported five people who were not living in Montague anymore. Having recently reviewed the Montague rolls, I can tell you many people are still on those rolls that are not supposed to be, and Marge McCabe told me five or so years ago when I sat, she told me that those people, their votes, that number would not have changed the outcome of the election and that it would wash out in the time to come going forward. These rolls don't get washed out. They're overbloated, and they're wrong, and we need to fix them, and buying new voting machines at taxpayers' expense is not going to change our voter integrity. So I implore you to do a little bit more due diligence on the voter integrity in this county, and other than just buying machines. So the other thing I want to make sure that people are going to start paying attention to the fact that we have not given our sheriff a contract yet. So please, that needs to be done and attended to. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Perhaps three minutes could be expended so that it's the same time in the beginning when it's an agenda item only.
The same three minutes applies to both.
I thought I read that it was five minutes.
Hi, I'm Nancy Rela from 225 Spring Street. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the commissioners for helping us out and being compassionate with our, with our problems. Thank you so much, from me and probably all the tenants in the building. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I just want to be clear and clarify for the record, Mr. Hayden, there's no conflict in the Commissioner Patillo voting. There's no legal conflict. There was no moral conflict. There's no ethical conflict, and if there was an optical conflict, that's just a singular subjective visionary issue of yours, but there was certainly no legal problem. The bigger issue was that it was... Yeah, but that wasn't really the subject of your attack, Mr. Hayden. It was directed to the Commissioner. The Commissioner was well within her, Commissioner was well within her authority to vote the way she did. The Commissioner was well within her authority to vote the way she did. I'm not worried about that. Yeah, but that's where you directed, that's where, that's the only thing I'm interested in, because that's where you directed your, your attack personally to her. It was a personal attack. You called her out by name. You called her out by name, Mr. Hayden. You went after her personally. I never said names. You certainly did. You said, you said that because of who she was married to. All right. Nobody could explain... The bottom line was, the bottom line was you were wrong. No, it wasn't. You're absolutely wrong. Maybe I was wrong on that, but not about the $4 million. The only thing I'm talking about is that.
Okay. Do we have a motion to close the floor for public comment and to return to regular business?
Still move.
Commissioner Carney moves. Commissioner Patillo seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. Item 22 on our agenda is our reminders portion of our agenda, and our reminder, yes, is to please check the county's website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. Before we move on to the next item, I know Commissioner Carney wants to make a quick comment.
The woman leave who gave the presentation about the, she left. That was, that was a great presentation, for sure. I agree, just like Dawn said, on pretty much all of her points. I personally would like to look into the Sierra Club and get those responses, too. Taking away hunting, I mean, that's why people move here in the first place, right? I mean, next thing you know, they're going to come knocking on our doors for guns, right? We don't want that either. The voter integrity, Barbara, that is a big issue that we've been going over for a while. I've actually been going to towns and getting them to put forward a resolution to support voter integrity. It's really important to, I think, all of us here when it comes to that. Voter machines, devote machines, I mean, this has been going on for a year now, but we're going to continue with the voter integrity. I give you my word on that to make sure that we're fighting that, we're combating, combating the, just irresponsibility of how voting is done and whether it be fraudulent or not, that we're going to continue that, so I just want to...
But on voting machines, I just want to add to that.
Clarify that.
We didn't just decide to put and do no voting machines. We didn't do it just because the governor asked us. For the past five years, we've been putting money aside to buy new machines because our machines are so old that they're failing. So it wasn't something that was just a reaction to something. This has been ongoing, too. We got to a point we had enough money to purchase the machines.
And just one more thing with the voting machines, too. The new voting machines, they have a scanner, so I don't know if you guys know this or not. I brought this up prior. They, you bring your license. I handed my license, kind of to be a wise guy, to be honest with you, and they scanned it, and all my information came up. So your name comes up, your address comes up, and there's, sometimes there's elderly people that work there, and they, number one, can't hear. I can't hear either, but they can't hear, they can't see. It comes up on a screen. It's really nice, and again, that's voter integrity right there, right? I'm not, I'm not Anthony Fasano, which I can tell them I'm Anthony Fasano, and I can vote, you know? And then Anthony can't vote. So the machines are better, for sure, and we needed them. It's, again, a little bit of voter integrity, but we'll continue that process.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Sylvia. Item 23 is our executive session reading, and I'm going to hand it off to Terry.
Where are the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners. As an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it for the result of the general nature of the subjects to be discussed, relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B as designated. Item number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege, PBA Sheriff's Office, PBA Prosecutor's Unit. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality, and be it further resolved that upon completion of the business which the Board has entered into the executive session, the Board shall not...
Shall not.
Shall not reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public, and therefore the Board will adjourn the meeting after executive session.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a motion to adopt the executive session resolution and enter into executive session?
Still move.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you very much, everybody. Please get home safe. Thank you.